Good evening. The August tenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera is absent. Doctor Vogt?
Here.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. The Long Branch Mayor, City Council, and Administration are committed to cultivating an environment of mutual trust and respect, the values of the diversity of our community. We will strive to enhance the quality of life for all who live here by making Long Branch a desirable place in which to live and prosper. We will treat all members of the public with respect and expect the same in return. Now the certification, please.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. Our first presentation will be the Thomas Stovall Proclamation. Mr. Dangler.
Before I start, I just want to say, when I heard about the, I guess you could say, confusion in regards to this year's event for the TJ Classic, I spoke with Coach Colvin and I spoke with Chris Parker, and we came up with the suggestion of this, what we're about to do here today. When I brought it to, the suggestion to the Mayor and Council, they were a hundred percent in support of it because of all the good that it has done, the fun day that it is and to represent the memory of your, of your brother and family member. So with that being said, the City of Long Branch proclamation, whereas Thomas Singletary Stovall was born in Long Branch, New Jersey on October twenty-first, nineteen seventy-nine, and whereas he was raised attending Long Branch High Schools as well as the Second Baptist Church, and whereas Thomas Stovall was an outstanding athlete at Long Branch High School and played basketball and football, graduated in nineteen ninety-eight, and whereas he continued honoring his athletic ability while he played, played football at William Patterson University, and whereas he remained active and engaged in the community of Long Branch, taking special interests in mentoring and teaching basketball and football to city youth, and whereas he became a proud father of Jason Stovall, who, like his father, excelled in athletics and will be starting college in September on a basketball scholarship. And whereas throughout his life, Thomas Stovall was known for his attitude of hospitality, sense of humor, love of family. He was a loving father, brother, family member, and friend. And whereas although Thomas Stovall passed, passed away too young, August fourteenth, twenty thirteen, his shining life example has inspired others to do good in his memory. Most notable, the TJ Classic Basketball Game Tournament Celebration, at which time children can receive back-to-school supplies. Now it is therefore, now therefore, the Mayor, City Council of the City of Long Branch hereby proclaim that the second Saturday of every August shall be known as Thomas Stovall Day in the City of Long Branch. Presented on the tenth of August, twenty twenty-two, it is signed by the Mayor and the Council President.
Okay. I just want to thank the city for the support and going forward and, yeah, just the support of everything. And I'm not a good speaker like that, so I'd rather somebody come up here and speak because, yeah, I'm not a good public speaker, so, but just thanks for the support of everything and hopefully going forward, we can make the city proud and continue to honor my brother. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And, and we would like to thank the Stovall family for having this event every year and, you know, giving it back to the community, and we truly appreciate it, and I remember your brother, so, thank you. And the next item will be the Monmouth County Open Space Grant, and I'm going to ask our engineer, Ms. Newman, to please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, as well as members of the public. For those of you who do not know me, I'm Laura Newman with the firm of CME Associates, serving as the city engineer. Our office has prepared a grant application for submission to Monmouth County for recreation improvements at both Manhasset Creek Park and Pleasure Bay Park on behalf of the City of Long Branch. As part of the grant submission, a public hearing is required as well as a resolution supporting the endorsement of the application. As everyone is aware, Pleasure Bay Park is located along Atlantic Avenue.
Laura, I'm sorry, but if, if you can't, could, I, I know they moved that mic a little away, Bert, can you?
Away from me? No, closer.
Yeah, we can hear you too well.
Oh, yeah.
Move it closer.
I'll move it. Better?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So Pleasure Bay Park is located along Atlantic Avenue and backs to the creek. Pleasure Bay Park has several recreational features, currently a playground, basketball court, open space, green area, as well as the pool. Similarly, Manhasset Creek Park is located along Long Branch Avenue and also along the creek, Manhasset Creek. Manhasset Creek Park also offers a variety of recreational activities, including the multipurpose turf fields, basketball, tennis, softball, baseball, and a playground. The objective of this project is to improve some of the existing features at both of these sites. Currently, various site amenities are failing or outdated. The proposed project will improve these amenities and improve the park overall to serve the community. The improvements proposed are resurfacing of the basketball court at Pleasure Bay Park, resurfacing of the basketball court at Manhasset Creek Park, replacing all of the netting over at Manhasset Creek Park. I'm sure if everybody sees, I know when I walked it with the Recreation Director, it's very loose, so fly balls can go astray or soccer balls. Installation of ADA exercise stations over at Manhasset Creek Park, that's currently something that isn't there and we feel would serve the community, and replacing the putting green over at Manhasset Creek Park. We feel that the addition of these improvements and these elements will provide the necessary amenities needed to expand its use and appeal of both of these parks and continue to make the parks a desired destination for the community. The estimated project cost for these improvements is four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. This is a matching grant with the county, but because we are designated as an urban aid community, we should, we are eligible for a maximum share of seventy-five percent of the project costs, up to a maximum of two hundred and fifty thousand, although we're going to request the full seventy-five percent with the application. This application is due to the county September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and typically the awards are announced within six to eight months from submission. If the grant is successful and the city chooses to move forward with this project, we anticipate design would be completed by summer of twenty twenty-three and construction to occur shortly thereafter. Essentially, this concludes the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions or hear any comments that anyone may have.
I think it's a great idea.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of July twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera is absent. Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Consideration of ordinance, public hearing and final consideration, zero five twenty, zero fifteen twenty-two, a calendar year, twenty twenty-two model ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA forty A four dash forty-five, um, dot fourteen. This ordinance was introduced on July sixth, twenty twenty-two, which establishes a cap bank, NJS forty A four forty-five one, which provides that in the, in the preparation of its annual budget, a municipality shall limit any increase in said budget to two-point-five percent unless authorized by ordinance to increase it to three-point-five percent over the previous year's final appropriations, subject to certain exceptions. NJSA forty A four forty-five fifteen A provides that a municipality may, when authorized by ordinance, appropriate the difference between the amount of its actual final appropriation and the three-point-five percent percentage rate as an exception to its final appropriations in either of the next two succeeding years. This ordinance allows for appropriation increases above the two-point-five percent. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Soccer.
All in favor?
Aye.
If any member of the public has any comments to make, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record, and you will have five minutes and may only speak once. I don't see anyone. Okay, I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
This is the second reading of ordinance fifteen dash twenty-two entitled, A Calendar Year, Twenty Twenty-Two Model Ordinance to Exceed the Municipal Budget Appropriation Limits and to Establish a Cap Bank, NJSA forty A four dash forty-five fourteen. I need a motion to adopt on second and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera is absent. Doctor Selly? I'm sorry, Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Okay, capital ordinance providing for various improvements to the Senior Citizen Center in and by the City of Long Branch and the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, appropriating five million, five hundred thousand dollars, therefore to pay for the cost thereof, which amount of five million, five hundred thousand dollars received from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. This ordinance was introduced on July sixth, twenty twenty-two, which authorizes various capital improvements, renovations, and upgrades to the Senior Citizen Center in the city. Five million, five hundred thousand dollar grant received from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If any member of the public has any comments to make, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Question, one-minute notification. Vincent Lepore, thirty-three Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Ordinance sixteen introduced July sixth reads as follows in parentheses, quote, "Which amount will be funded by a grant in the amount of five-and-a-half million received or expected to be received from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. Adoption scheduled tonight, August tenth." The ordinance reads in the parentheses, "Which amount will be funded by a grant in the amount of five-and-a-half million received from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one?" And tonight's municipal budget sheet, sheet forty B, has senior citizen center, three, estimated total cost, seven-and-a-half million. Five D grants and aids and other funds, seven-and-a-half million. The other funds being a developer contribution of two million from two ninety Ocean Avenue Development. Question, Mr. Martin, was the municipal budget held off until tonight so as to accommodate receipt of the five-and-a-half million from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one?
No.
No. Now, tonight again, as approximately a year ago, the city again wants to double the space of the senior center from six thousand, five hundred fifty square feet to thirteen thousand, four hundred fifty square feet, with a new exterior look, technology rooms, multipurpose rooms, open lobby, health screening rooms, fitness rooms, bigger classrooms, more storage, list goes on and on, notwithstanding beachy architectural designs replicating the bungalow and wave, which is a wasteful expense. The problem now is where are the itemized expenses, cost professional fees, and upgraded plans to justify seven-and-a-half million tonight? They're not attached to the ordinance, they're not attached to the budget. I've submitted an offer to such. An open public records request that's still outstanding. Again, the original two million from the developer, two ninety Ocean LLC, which is the city in jeopardy of losing because of project denial by NJDEP CAFA and a court challenge, was to modernize and bring up-to-date the senior center to be a first-class facility. On sheet nine of the municipal budget for senior citizen program anticipated revenue, twenty twenty-two is twenty-two thousand dollars. On sheet fifteen E, appropriations, office of the senior activity salaries and wages, the year twenty twenty-two, seventy-seven thousand. Other expenses, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred. Mr. Martin, question, on the numbers I just cited, where's the funding coming from to finance the staff, said programs, et cetera, of a seven-and-a-half million dollar senior center?
I mean, it's coming from the American Rescue Plan and the two million dollar contribution.
Seven, the five-and-a-half from the American Rescue Plan is going to pay the wages and the salaries?
No, that's coming from the general revenue.
That's coming from?
Tax revenue.
From the taxpayers.
Sorry, I missed my shift.
So again, repeat, the emphasis, what two million called, could have done a year ago, now takes five-and-a-half million to rescue the senior center. The fallacy that this five-and-a-half million isn't coming from the taxpayers is cruel because it's coming out of their federal taxes. What's the real reason for the five-and-a-half million supposed rescue of the senior center? Five-and-a-half million was available to be taken from the Rescue Plan Act, whether needed or not, so as to apply it to the senior center as political pork for Congressman Pallone, and in turn, all the special interests and professionals involved in the senior center project will contribute to the campaign coffers of the Pallone pay-to-play gravy train, leaving the local taxpayers to support the increased budgets to run a seven-and-a-half million dollar senior center.
One-minute warning.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is why this country is in big trouble, fiscal mouth feesons. The money is available from the feds, so grab it and spend it, whether justified or not. As continues junk government.
Anyone else? Okay.
Alice Kessler, Long Branch Avenue, Long Branch.
Ms. Kessler, can you lower the microphone a little bit? Thank you.
First, I would like to thank Mayor Pallone and Council for the Long Branch Swimming Pool. It is truly the frosting on the cake of our fine city. It's actually more than just a place to cool off with a swim. Across all lines of race, religion, age, and income, income levels, the community pool has turned neighbors into friends. I go there myself four or five times a week, by myself, and I'm amazed at how many people I actually talk to.
Ms. Kessler, I'm sorry, is this, does your speech have anything to do about the senior center that we're talking about?
Oh, you're talking at the wrong time? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
But, but thank you.
Yes, absolutely. This is the second reading of ordinance sixteen dash twenty-two entitled, A Capital Ordinance Providing for Various Improvements to the Senior Center and in and by the City of Long Branch in the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, Appropriating Five Million, Five Hundred Thousand Dollars, Therefore to Pay for the Cost Thereof, Which Amount of Five Million, Five Hundred Thousand Dollars Received from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. I need a motion to adopt on second and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera is absent. Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Okay. Ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter one-one-six beaches by amending subsections one sixteen dash five rules and regulations of the Code of the City of Long Branch. This ordinance was introduced on July twentieth, twenty twenty-two, which prohibits throwing, tossing, or pitching any ball, frisbee, or like objects on the beach or in the adjacent waters. Volleyball is only permitted in designated areas and during periods of time designated by the city. It also prohibits tents, camping tents, or canopies, except in conjunction with authorized special events on the beachfront. The only permitted shade devices on the beachfront are umbrellas with one central shaft no larger than eight feet across and baby tents no larger than fifty inches wide by thirty, thirty-six inches deep. Glass bottles, containers, or glass objects of any kind are also prohibited on the beachfront. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If any member of the public has any comments to make, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once. No? Okay. I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the second reading of ordinance seventeen dash twenty-two entitled, An Ordinance Amending Chapter One Sixteen Beaches by Amending Subsections One-One-Six-Dash-Five Rules and Regulations of the Code of the City of Long Branch. I need a motion to adopt on second and final reading and advertise according to law. Is that a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera is absent. Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Eighteen dash twenty-two, an ordinance authorized in the mayor to enter into a deed of open space easement for block four thirty-four, lot one point oh one, and block four forty-four, lot five point oh one. This ordinance was introduced on July twentieth, twenty twenty-two, which conveys the property of block four thirty-four, lot one point oh one, and block four forty-four, lot five point oh one, to the county through a deed of open space easement to preserve and protect the park and recreation and open space values. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If any member of the public has any comments to make, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once. No? Okay. I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Soccer.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the second reading of ordinance eighteen dash twenty-two entitled, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Enter into Deed of Open Space Easement for Block Four Thirty-four, Lot One Point Oh One, and Block Four Forty-four, Lot Five Point Oh One. I need a motion to adopt on second and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera is absent. Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Ordinances for introduction. This is the first reading of ordinance nineteen dash twenty-two entitled, An Ordinance Designating No Parking Anytime from the West Side of North Bath Avenue, extending from the northern apex of North Bath Avenue and the Norwood Avenue intersection, southeast to the northern driveway apron of twenty-three Norwood Avenue, rear lot. This ordinance prohibits parking at all times from the west side of North Bath Avenue, extending from the northern apex of North Bath Avenue and the Norwood Avenue intersection, southeast to the northern driveway apron of twenty-three Norwood Avenue, rear lot. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law, and set the public hearing for August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera is absent. Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance twenty dash twenty-two entitled, An Ordinance Designating No Parking Anytime from the North Side of Seaview Avenue, extending from Ocean Boulevard to Ocean Avenue North. This ordinance prohibits parking anytime from the north side of Seaview Avenue, extending from Ocean Boulevard to Ocean Avenue North. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise, and post according to law, and set the public hearing for August tenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera is absent. Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Budget amendment at this time before the public hearing on the twenty twenty-two Long Branch Municipal Budget, I need a motion to adopt a resolution, R two oh two twenty-two entitled, Resolution Amending the Twenty Twenty-Two City of Long Branch Municipal Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera is absent. Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Doctor Selly?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Public hearing on the twenty twenty-two Long Branch Municipal Budget. Before we open the public hearing on the adoption of the budget, Michael Martin, the Chief Financial Officer of the city, has prepared a presentation.
Good evening. This is a presentation for the City of Long Branch, two thousand twenty-two Municipal Budget.
Can you raise the volume?
I'm comparing the two thousand twenty-two estimated tax rate to the two thousand twenty-one actual tax rate. Residents will see a reduction of approximately thirty cents. In looking at the tax rate over the past three years, you can see the city has been going down in rate each year. The city does not keep all the money you pay on your tax bill. Thirty-eight and a half percent is used to fund the city budget. Forty-six point three percent is paid to the school board. Thirteen percent goes to the county and open space programs, and one point nine three percent goes to fund library operations. The average assessed value of homes in Long Branch has been increasing steadily over the past several years. The average residential assessment has gone from four hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars in two thousand twenty to five hundred and two thousand, thirty dollars in two thousand twenty-one, up to five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars in two thousand twenty-two. Departamentally, the budget is spent as follows. Eighteen million, three hundred ninety-six thousand dollars is spent on police and fire departments. This is where the city spends the most money. Public Works is the second largest department, spending seven million, one hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred dollars. General Administration, insurance, debt service, statutory payments, and other departments account for the rest of the budget's expenditure. A summary of city appropriations is as follows. Salary wages make up forty-two point four-six percent of the budget. Other expenses account for forty-two point three-seven percent. Debt services, ten point eight percent, and the reserve for uncollected taxes is three percent of the budget. This year, Long Branch's two thousand twenty-two budget comes in at sixty-six million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars. Here is where all that money comes from. Sixty percent comes from taxes raised in the levy. Thirteen point five percent comes from local revenue, such as fee trees, parking fees, other, and other fees and permits. Six point eight percent is from state aid, and the balance is from delinquent taxes, library taxes, and other miscellaneous sources. If you compare the last three years with the amount to be raised by taxes in the budget, you will see that it has not increased at all. This means that as the city is faced with increasing costs of fuel, pensions, and almost every item in the city purchases, we have been able to utilize other sources of revenue, other than taxes, to balance our budget. There are two state cap calculations that we must adhere to.
The Marvish slides.
Are illustrated on this page. Your appropriation cap, which restricts the municipality's spending by three-and-a-half percent increase annually. As you can see, Long Branch is well under this cap by five hundred and eleven thousand dollars. The levy cap calculation restricts municipalities on hours they could raise their tax levy to two percent annually. This year, Long Branch is under the maximum allowable increase by one million, six hundred and two thousand dollars. Capital projects going on around the city consist of road repaving, park improvements, drainage improvements, building renovations, and major senior center innovation with a division. The city exercises cost-saving measures in the following ways. On the resale of fuel and road salt to defray the cost of digging. On地 resale fuel and road salt to defray the cost of equipment. Shared service agreements with other towns for construction official IT services, finance department, and life for training. The city engages in bidding for bulk natural gas and electricity to ensure the best possible pricing of its utilities. I'd like to end with some benefits of living in Long Branch. There are miles of pristine public beaches with the lowest price season badge in the county. There's street parking for residents at oceanfront municipal lots. We have a rent department that offers a multitude of sports and activities at our numerous recreational areas. We have a nationally recognized library. We have a combined volunteer and full-time paid fire department. We have a very active senior center with over nine hundred members. We have a brand-new community pool. We're building two towns in Long County with its own health department. There's a Long Branch Arts and Cultural Center. We have twice-weekly garbage and semi-monthly lawn pickup. And everyone enjoys our summer concert series with live music three times a week. This concludes our budget presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. That will conclude the presentation. I need a motion to open the public hearing on the twenty twenty-two municipal budget.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If any member of the public has any comments to make regarding the twenty twenty-two municipal budget, please come to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Request one-minute notification. Vincent Lepore, thirty-three, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Mr. Martin, why was the budget delayed till tonight for adoption?
We had increased costs. We were trying to nail down some estimates of cost of items such as fuel and some event
Mr. Martin, last Friday, I requested backups from various departments for itemized submitted budgets. The response from finance was that they're not available. Why is that, Mr. Martin?
Sorry, you want backups for the budgets from the departments?
The breakouts of the line items. Several departments have listed other expenses without itemization, and then underneath that, miscellaneous other expenses without explanation, no itemized breakout. In years past, prior to COVID, I was able to get departmental breakouts for the line items. Why are they not available tonight for the public?
Years past, we set departmental public hearings where those documents were produced. The state requires only one number for other expenses in the state document, and that's where we produced. We will do a breakdown once we input the budgets or finance numbers. Get out the copy of the document.
That's an unsatisfactory answer because on sheet thirteen, Office of the City Attorney, it says other expenses had jumped from last year four hundred and fifty-five thousand to this year five hundred thousand. No itemization. That's sad. Mr. Martin, on sheet fifteen B, there exists Department of Police Chief with salaries and wages of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand for twenty twenty-two and other expenses not itemized for nine thousand four hundred and fifty. If the police chief's position was eliminated, why does this apartment exist?
That's where the Director of Public Safety is charged. He probably just carried forward through this budget.
So the proper identification for that category is Public Safety Director? Is that correct? Yes or no, Mr. Martin?
The title would remain the same in the budget, it's just who's charged there.
As I go look at the Bureau of Recreation, miscellaneous other expenses, Cable Commission, other expenses, Long Branch Arts Council, jumped twenty thousand, other expenses, no explanations as to why. Mr. Martin, the payment in lieu of taxes scheme pilots approved for Peer Village Three allowed the developers to first apply pilot taxes assessed to Peer Village Three to the interest and principal debt service payments on their twenty-one point one million dollar RAB, which was predicated on sworn affidavits by the developers as their need for public financing prior to remitting any pilot tax receipts to the city. Concerning these pilots of Peer Village Three, Mr. Martin, how much in property of taxes were applied to interest and principal payments on the twenty-one point one million dollar redevelopment area bond during calendar year twenty twenty-one as allowed for under the terms negotiated by the Schneider-Polone administrations?
I would have to research that specific number if I could.
Sheet four A, pilot payments, Peer Village Three and South Beach.
One-minute notification.
Twenty twenty-two, two and a half million dollars. The city is promoting the two and a half million figure as a positive when in fact it's a negative because the taxes coming in from Peer Village Three and South Beach would be significantly higher had there been no pilot tax abatements, especially in the past year's real estate markets, leaving an increased burden on everyone else in this city. No. The real feel for the taxpayers is lacking in this budget. The fact is, the taxes should have been shot down further. There's a lot room to put it down further. Again, the real feel to the taxpayers in this city is not being delivered by this budget. I'm requesting no on this budget. No.
I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I need a motion to adopt resolution R two oh three dash twenty-two entitled a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-two City of Long Branch Municipal Budget as amended. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera is absent. Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Public participation for resolutions and all general comments. I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If there is anyone in the audience that has a comment to make, please step to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once. Mrs. Kessler, did you want to come up?
Alice Kessler, Long Branch Avenue, Long Branch, Jersey. Sorry to repeat myself, but first I would like to thank Mayor Polone and the council for the Long Branch Swimming Pool. It is truly the frosting on the cake of our fine city. It's actually more than just a place to cool off with a swim. Across all lines of race, religion, age, and income levels, the community pool has turned neighbors into friends. I go there four or five times a week by myself, and I'm amazed at all the people that are so friendly and all the people I talk to. Most special, the mayor has given seniors a free exercise water class two days a week. And surprising to me, eighteen seniors, men and women, are in that pool at eight AM every Tuesday and Thursday, and we do non-stop movement to music for one hour. That's more seniors that show up for any exercise program I've ever attended at the senior center. Of the eighteen seniors in the class, in the pool class, I recognize only four faces that go to the senior center. I don't think the others think the senior center has anything worth attending. I bet each of you, and some of you on this council are seniors, I bet each of you know two or three seniors who do not go to the senior center. Why is that, and why should you care? I'll tell you why. In Long Branch, the senior population is the largest percentage of people who actually show up to vote, and I know that you all want votes. Second, these seniors have been living in our town the longest time and have been paying the bills for the city with their real estate taxes the longest period of time. Lastly, if you are fortunate enough to have parents here who are alive in their eighties and nineties, and everyone seems to be living longer, wouldn't you want their last ten or twenty years to be their most enjoyable? Don't they deserve that? So why is it that seniors you know and I know do not go to the senior center? Most seniors I know have limited income and choose how they spend their money very carefully. Why should they have to spend three dollars or fifteen dollars a week? I'll talk faster now, I'm afraid I'm going to run out of time, to exercise fifteen dollars a week when food and gas are at an all-time high, and that fifteen dollars would put extra food on their Sunday table? And since you'll be confronted and humiliated by staff if you don't pay that phony donation fee, some people would rather just not go there. Now, in Eaton Town, it's different. Five days a week, exercise every day, completely free, and they welcome any senior from any town. In addition, they offer all seniors one or two day trips a year. They took me and other seniors on a boat ride. They took us to the Sculpture Garden in New Jersey, completely free. No charge for the bus. That's how they treat seniors. Red Bank Senior Space. For the first, for the last four years, I and three or four other Long Branch seniors go to the Broad Street Center where we are first given an hour of free exercise. Tai Chi, belly dancing, chair yoga, completely free. Free lunch, or at least if they're not going to give lunch that particular day, they give you coffee free. We socialize for an hour around a table after that. An hour of watercolor or acrylic painting with an instructor and supplies included, and all are welcome. You don't have to live in Red Bank. Again, everything completely free. I've seen, and I've talked to the people who had these programs, the Long Branch budget for the senior center is larger than the Red Bank or the Eaton Town centers, but they can give their seniors free exercise.
Five minutes.
It's up?
Yes.
Now, I'm living in Long Branch on the north side of town. I'll have to come back and finish this.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I'll have to come back, I'm sorry. But there's really a lot more to say.
Vincent Lepore, thirty-three, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch, requesting one-minute notification of the Long Branch Sewage Authority. I've attended more meetings of the Long Branch Sewage Authority, having regularly attended for many years, than the current three out of five commissioners now on the Sewage Authority have. Unlike any other meeting before, I was taken aback at the last Sewage Authority meeting when one commissioner caused a twenty-five-minute conversation to take place about increased compensation for that particular commissioner. That particular commissioner is a political appointee of Mayor Polone. At the conclusion of the conversation, it was determined that a meeting will take place with Mayor Polone so that the city can bring about a resolution via the council to award the commissioner increased compensation. I voiced my strong dissent to this, as I will again tonight, against such a measure. No political appointee of Mayor Polone is going to be rewarded with increased compensation on the Sewage Authority, nor less a political appointee asking Polone for an increase and Polone approving it. I will do everything legally possible, Polone, to block you from turning this city's Sewage Authority into a political racketeering, pay-to-play gravy train by increasing compensation.
Everything you say is untrue.
You are interrupting my speech. Council President, reprimand the mayor.
Council President?
Council President, are you going to reprimand the mayor or not?
He's lying.
Officer, can you please escort the mayor out of the room? His conduct is uncivil.
Mr. Lepore, I'm going to ask you to please stop the way you're acting. You're not being-
I am being interrupted. I want my time restored. And Polone, I was there, you weren't. You've proven again to be a liar. I will continue.
Mr. Lepore, please stop repeating-
Sewage Authority into a political racketeering, pay-to-play gravy train by increasing compensation to your political appointee on the Sewage Authority, who by the way, is also a committeeman of your political party. So in turn, that increased compensation can be used-
You're lying again, Mr. Lepore.
-to kickback to the political campaign coffers of the Polones, all at the expense of the city ratepayers. This Sewage Authority is not going to be corrupted by you and your political appointee, Polone. Over the many years I've attended the Sewage Authority meetings, you, Polone, have only appeared once, and that was for the retirement of a former executive director. And on the flip side, your lack of attendance at these meetings is perhaps the reason why the Sewage Authority is operating well. You're not there. In the public interest as a concerned citizen, as I've mentioned before, I've attended Sewage Authority meetings for many years, and I would never expect to be compensated for such. I can't think much more that the commissioners do than what I do for the Sewage Authority. I've offered many a suggestion for the good of the authority, most recently sourcing a significant project currently in review. If I required to sign papers or attend special meetings, I would gladly do so. And even with the just said, I still would never expect to be compensated. I'm there for the public good, as the commissioners should be. Separate from the just-mentioned compensation matter, Long Branch residents, compliments of the Schneider-Polone redevelopment policies, the Sewage Authority is now presented with another challenge.
One-minute warning.
The authority has now required studies involving the cost analysis of facility expansion to address increasing flow rates approaching capacity levels due to the city's redevelopment. No doubt, another hidden cost to the taxpayer ratepayers of this city. This is another reason why no compensation should be awarded to the commissioners on an increase. The people of this city are being hit hard enough with enough. Enough is enough. It's junk government. And Polone never called me a liar because you're the master liar of this city for quite a few years, back to two thousand fourteen, exact. Junk government. Your signature's on junk government.
Are you leaving the room, Mr. Lepore? Are you going to stay?
My time is too far.
Thank you.
You don't have a count?
Thank you. Mr. Lepore is a liar, as I have said before that he is a liar. So let's set the record straight on this. Just what, I'm just, you know what? I'm going to try to stay calm. So I was, again, let's be clear for those who are watching at home that Mr. Lepore has left the room. Perhaps he's standing outside the door, but I request that he comes back in so I can talk to him, but I guess he's not going to do that. But in any event, let's just be very clear. He's absolutely right. I was not at the Sewage Authority meeting, and I have no idea what went down at the Sewage Authority meeting. Maybe Mr. Lepore heard whatever he heard, but I wasn't- Maybe Mr. Lepore heard whatever he heard, but I wasn't there to hear it. What I did know is I was given a call from members of the Sewage Authority who asked me if the council and the mayor would entertain the thought of compensation, additional compensation for Sewage Authority members. My response was absolutely not. Speaking for myself, I also thought I was speaking for the council, but speaking for myself, I said absolutely not. And I said, please ask the commissioner. I'm going to call the commissioner who brought this up, which I did, and I explained to him that I would be absolutely opposed to any increased compensation for Sewage Authority members. That is a fact, and that, and I'm saying that publicly. So again, understand and put in context what Mr. Lepore just said for the last five minutes. It is an outright lie, as he has lied before about me. I have no problem with Mr. Lepore coming up here, attacking anyone he wants to attack. We can all take it, and that's fine. But what I object to when he's going to be an outright liar, which for the last five minutes, quite frankly, he was. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will now ask Madam Clerk if there were any changes to the list of resolutions.
No changes have been made.
Thank you. We can take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera is absent. Doctor vote?
Yes.
Doctor Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Willis?
Yes.
Applications, there are none. Now for the miscellaneous business for the good of the order, Councilman Dangler?
Thank you, Council President. First, thank you, Mayor Palone, for clearing that up in regards to the Sewage Authority. Second thing I want to say is, every Wednesday at six o'clock in front of the train station and across the street from Dunkin' Donuts, Jersey Shore Food Not Bombs Organization, it is not a political organization, has nothing to do with party or politics. It, they give out fresh vegetables, some bread, some of it is organic and some of it is vegan, but it is give local farms donated to the organization, and they're out there every Wednesday. They've been out there every Wednesday since the pandemic. So we're not taking advantage of it. There are plenty of people who could use the food or who need the food. There is no qualifications. You just go out there at six o'clock, stand in line. It is, they are aware of COVID, so everyone has a mask on that is handing out the food. The residents that, or the guests that come to get the food, they just point to what they want. They have gloves on, and the volunteers, they just hand them whatever it is that they may want. You should bring a bag, and I told them that I was there a couple of weeks ago, and it is a very, very good program, and they're just a little disappointed that we don't take more advantage of the food. Any vegetables or fruit that may be bad, they take that out of the crates and boxes before they even put it out on display. So please take advantage of it every Wednesday, six o'clock in front of the train station. The second thing, excuse me, the third and last thing in regards to the budget that was just presented, Mike, Mr. Martin and your staff, and certainly the administration, is a very nice presentation, and I'm proud of the fact that for the third year in a row, we've, we're trying, we're going down, we're doing the best we can with the increase, certainly. Again, with COVID, everything is going up, and we're able to keep it down. And I want to publicly thank the Board of Education, even though the budget is a large part of it, of our city budget, we do give, and we should give to the Board of Education. They have done their part every year, and certainly this year, to even lower from where they were last year, so that actually helps the residents. So again, it's all the way around. The city as a whole has done, done a good job of trying to keep the taxes down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman, vote.
Thank you, Council President. I would also like to start off by thanking the mayor for setting the record straight. Those of you who have attended council meetings on a regular basis or tuned in to watch them on TV, you know that this has been something we've been trying to do, meeting after meeting after meeting, is to make sure that the information that is commented on is presented correctly. So I thank you, mayor, and applaud you for doing that. Next, I, Councilman, um-
Bill.
Councilman Billy. Councilman, the name of the person you gave the certificate to?
Jermaine Stovall.
Jermaine. Would you please tell him, he commented, and he didn't give himself credit because he said, "I'm not a good public speaker," and kind of discounted his remarks in the beginning. When you speak from your heart, as he did, you're a magnificent public speaker, and just pass on to him-
I will let him know.
-that that just came through so, in such a heartwarming way. So I just wanted to comment on that. The other thing I wanted to comment on is this is National Health Center Week, and so it is an opportunity for us to applaud the efforts of our wonderful Family Health Center run by Martha Silverberg. She had a very nice event today, well-attended. And for those of you who may not be familiar, the Health Center just makes sure that health services, dental services, mental health services, behavioral health services are available to everybody, regardless of ability to pay, regardless of any sort of criteria. And those of you who are familiar with our Family Health Center, you know that Martha and her staff do a magnificent job, so kudos to all of them. And last, also kudos to Mike Martin. That was an excellent presentation. I'm wondering if that presentation, I don't know if it'll be posted on the website or if it could be available. Very well done, and it's the kind of thing you want to just be able to refer to because there was a lot of good information. So kudos to you and your staff on a very nice job. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sully?
Last Saturday, in Canton, Ohio, one of Long Branch's own, Sam Mills, was enshrined in the Hall of Fame. What a wonderful thing that was. And it's amazing how hometown people can be heroes, and believe me, he was one of them. I had the pleasure of knowing him and meeting him, and he was a fine young man. And that's all I want to say to his family. God bless him. And my second comment tonight is on the budget. I'd like to thank Mr. Martin for the presentation that he gave, and I hope everybody realizes where their tax dollars go. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Palone?
Thank you, Council President. First off, I, you know, I want to apologize to the council because actually I did go off, you know, by interrupting Mr. Lepore, but you know, my parents always taught me, like, if somebody's going to lie to your face, you have to call them out for it. So I can't just let him talk for five minutes without interrupting him, calling him what he is. And you know, if you notice, I specifically asked Mr. Lepore to stay in the room so that I could talk to him directly. We didn't want him to respond, but I just wanted to hear my five minutes as he gave it to you for the last five minutes. But he didn't even have the decency or the courtesy to stay. He had to leave. And again, to me, it's, it's really sad. I look at Laura Newman here, and I think of everything we put together with that pool, and he went to the DEP and tried to stop it. And then after he stopped it, and the success that he is, he came forward and he said last year, "The pool is cracked and falling apart." And I had to go into a fine fair, and somebody's saying to me, "Mr. Palone, I'm so sorry about the pool. It's not going to open again." One example. Second example, Seaview Towers. He came here to tell us the Seaview Towers demolition is going too slow. Then, when we sped it up, not only sped it up, was ahead of schedule, then he went and he said that there's asbestos in the air, they're not doing it properly, all of which was totally untrue. Again, unfair. It's sad that Mr. Lepore has to resort to that. So again, he, so much of what he says, and again, if he was here, I wish you would hear because I would honestly, honestly tell him. But again, you know, let me, let me not, not continue. I think I explained, but it's just very frustrating when somebody comes up and just outright lies like that. It's just, it's very sad, actually. Anyway, thank you, and ladies and gentlemen, I apologize again. Mayor's report, there's a couple of things I'd like to mention. So we're having a fun day at West End Park this Sunday from three-thirty to six-thirty, followed by a summer concert, but this time, as it was two weeks ago, the concert is going to be on the beach, and that's going to start at seven o'clock. We're having a celebration of the Adam Bucky James Center is this Wednesday, the seventh, I'm sorry, next Wednesday, August seventeenth, a week from now, from five to seven at the Bucky James Center. The event will have guest speakers, a bookbag giveaway for the kids, refreshments, sandwiches, and we're actually going to have a cake and some building tours for those who haven't been in. So join us for a night to honor Adam Bucky James and find out about him. And also, there's going to be a free barbecue, which we've had for the last, I think this is going to be the third now, sponsored by the City FMBA, and that's on Monday, August twenty-ninth, at six-thirty. The movie will begin at eight o'clock, the barbecue is at six-thirty, and the library, and I want to thank the library, the fire department for all that they've done. And the movie that will be played is, I think, the original Shrek. So again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening, and have a great week.
Thank you, mayor. I'd also like to thank everyone for coming here this evening. Mr. Martin, you did an awesome job with the budget. I know it's a lot of work, and I want to thank you for that. It was very informative. To the Stovall family, again, thank you for, you know, having this event every year, and I know that this children in the community and all the residents really benefit from it, and it's a great thing, and we thank you for that. And I, you know, I listen to Mr. Lepore when he gets up every other week, and you know, it's so easy to put people down on not to listen, and it's very sad. It really is, because that's not what we're all about. And mayor, I'm sorry you had to go through this tonight. You work very hard for our city every day, one of the hardest-working people I know, and we thank you for all of your efforts, truly. And one other thing, congratulations to Chris Parker, our new Director of Parks and Recreation. We wish him well. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.